Settle in. Okay, we are now recording. So I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors to order. And we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And if the clerk will call the roll.
Supervisor Johnson is excused, Supervisor Pat Breslin, Supervisor Headland, Supervisor Score, Supervisor Steen, Supervisor Zanz, Supervisor Gary Bjork, Supervisor Wilsie, Supervisor Quinn, Supervisor Jarrett Simo, Supervisor Whitzel, Supervisor Kneer, Supervisor Barrier, Supervisor Calabrese, Supervisor Lyon, Supervisor Vogel is joining us online.
Here.
Supervisor Sean Breslin. Supervisor Vandermeulen, Supervisor Robinson.
Here.
Supervisor Robinson is joining us online, Supervisor Morehouse, Supervisor Hagan, Supervisor Thomas, Supervisor Prochnow, Supervisor Gilbert, Supervisor Larry Bjork, Supervisor Bauer, Supervisor Lino, Supervisor Hartung, Chair McCullough.
Here.
Excellent.
Very quickly done there. So I need a motion to approve the minutes. Supervisor Morehouse moves, Supervisor Bauer seconds. Any speaking to the minutes? Oh, sure. Well, let's get your mic turned on. There we go.
Okay. I think it's ERP Steering Committee, not Seering Committee.
Oh, yes.
I guess that depends on what all they do, but yes, I will make that modification. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, it was more searing when it was SAP, so. All right, thank you Supervisor Jarrett Simo. Any further speaking to the minutes? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended? Say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, minutes are accepted. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and other communications. Okay, I think I will just use this moment here to note that several of our supervisors will not be back with us this next time around. We have three who have filed not to run, and we may have several more coming up. And I would like to thank all of those outgoing supervisors for their service. Informally tonight, in May, we will recognize those people who are not returning a little more formally with certificates and the usual rigmarole and handshaking. On that front, if you are not reelected, you are still a supervisor for the purposes of your committees until the April reorganization meeting. So do not skip out on those last couple of meetings, they'll need you for quorum. And Dan has asked me to let those of you know who are not going to be returning that he would like your laptops back as soon as possible because they will need to go on to the next supervisors. And that concludes it for me. All right. Public comment, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak? Doesn't look like it. Onto appointments, there are no appointments this month. Item eight, report of the county manager, Chris, over to you.
Right, with your permission, I'll do A, C, and D in the same fell swoop, and then, okay. All right. Well, good evening. So you had at your seats a copy of the purchase overs over $40,000. We inadvertently put last month's again in this month. And so I printed them for you so you can see them. Any questions about them? Appreciation to Beata who's putting a little bit of a description about what they were for.
Supervisor Lino.
And looking at this list, the list that we had on the documents or on the packet, there was something about Baki Norman for 40,000?
Yes, that was last month, but that is our contract for Family Court Commissioner or Court Commissioner services.
Okay, so that's a one-time monthly?
What? One time, I believe. I believe it's one time. I think that's the annual contract with them.
Okay, well, I just didn't see it here on this new piece, that's why I was wondering, that's all.
Yeah, those were, the one that came out in the packet was from last month, and you had gotten it last, received it last month as well.
Never mind.
We're not paying them all twice. There was just a minor clerical error.
All right, thank you.
The Family Court Commissioner deals with cases that, like uncontested divorces. And a lot of the pre-work in family court things, and they have a designated person from Baki Norman who handles that, whose name eludes me. Dave Schoenberger, there you go. Thanks to Nick. All right. Okay, couple of other things. I wanted to just run through a real quick overview of what we're looking to do for new board member orientation, and if you're an existing board member and you wish to participate, we would more than welcome you. So we are inviting the new board members, have sent out a save the date to kind of anyone who would potentially be, need to be here on April 10th, which would be after the election but before the county board meeting. At three, from 3:30 to 4:30 is the, roughly, is the executive committee meeting. And then we are going to use from 4:30 to 5:30 to work, have folks work with IT to set up their technology. And then at five, and then we're, and we're going to feed you a light lunch, dinner, and then at 5:30, we're going to, going to do the first session, first session of an orientation. Then in June, a maze meeting and June's meeting before the county board meetings, those evenings, we'll use kind of the same format, we'll meet at probably around 5 o'clock, feed you a light meal, and then do orientation until 6:30-ish before the board meeting. Hoping to break it up in bite-sized chunks instead of feeding you all a big old huge meal in one sitting. And then in June, or sorry, July, September, and October, because there's no county board meeting in August, we'll use the same format, but we'll meet, have a bite to eat, and then do tours, county facility tours, and meeting of department heads, and we'll break up a schedule for that. So again, if you have been here a long time, if you've been here one session, through one session or one term, you're welcome to join us for that, and we'll make sure you get a lot of information, but just to kind of know what that's going to look like. Any questions about that? All right. And then our enterprise resource and planning system, our ERP, our financial system, just to, I'm going to just kind of always give you, as I mentioned last month, a little bit of an update. We continue to make very good progress. KT is our project manager. We do have our searing committee, oh, I mean, our steering committee. And our pitch crews, and each of them have a lead, there are seven of them, they have been meeting on a regular basis. I believe that we have about 50-ish people or more of the county involved in this process in some capacity, and the goal being to really spread the knowledge and the ownership of the new system. Hoping to get people's buy-in early and have them be excited about this transition. Our goal is to put out an RFP a little bit later in the year, mid-year, mid to late year this year, and implementation of mid to late 2025. And at this point in time, you will see, come to you next month, provided it makes its way through all of the committees, necessary some use of some of our leftover ARPA money to be able to fund that, which should pretty much fund it in full outside of the staff time that's involved, if that's how you choose to spend that. So, any questions about ERP? All right, with that, I'm going to turn things over to Andrew, who's going to give you a little bit of information about the upcoming election and the new redistricting maps.
Thanks, Chris. So in your packet of information, you would have had the two different maps that were included. One is the, they're side by side. So the previous maps of the Assembly District and the new Assembly Districts that will be represented for Dunn County, and on the other side, there's the Senate Districts. If we're looking at the Assembly, I just, we keep getting more clarified maps, so I just wanted to make sure we're including that. So you can see, if you're looking at the Assembly one from previously in 2022, for example, all the municipalities that were represented in Assembly District 29, there were many of them, District, Assembly Districts 67 and 93. So that was kind of the previous makeup of Dunn County and where those Assembly Districts fell. On the right-hand side, you're going to see the state Assembly Districts, the new ones in 2024. This is, of course, in response to the Supreme Court, Wisconsin Supreme Court striking down the previous maps that had been processed in 2021. With that, the legislature and governor came together to adopt these current maps. Oh, thank you. So what you can see there on the right is our new Wisconsin State Assembly District. Now, this is fun for many reasons, one of which, for example, our current representative for the 29th Assembly District no longer lives in the 29th Assembly District, he now lives in the 92nd Assembly District. So there's quite a few changes. You can see we went from three Assembly Districts in '22 to four Assembly Districts now in 2024. We will make sure that after the April 2 election, that all the municipalities and voters in those municipalities are notified of their new districts. We didn't want to get it confused with the spring election. So that information will be going out after the April election, so people can really know and identify which new Assembly District they fall in. So I just tried to highlight and make it simple to see which municipalities now will be represented in each of those Assembly Districts. If you flip it over, then of course, the Wisconsin State Senate Districts, you can kind of see the makeup of the previous districts, where we had the 10th Senate District, the 23rd, and the 31st Senate Districts, and now we will have those same districts, those same numbered districts, but they've moved around quite a bit, as you can see. And apologies for, the yellow is, I promise you, it's, they're two different shades of yellow, it's just very slight. So just kind of trying to highlight that, and you can kind of see the shift of how the Senate districts have moved, and of course, of the 99 Assembly Districts, there are 33 State Senate Districts, there's three Assembly Districts in each Senate District. So that's kind of how that's broken apart. Questions on the new maps and what that means for anyone? That was confusing. Again, mostly just an informational item that we wanted to bring your attention to as we get more information. Yeah? Sure. Sure. I can, uh-huh. So currently, okay, so this is going to get confusing, because I'm going to say currently, because technically, they're still our representative until this November, right? So the maps on the right-hand side really don't go into effect until this, well, technically August because of the partisan primary, and then really, they'd be represented in these new districts starting January of next year if they're elected in, on November 5 of this year. This also gets really exciting when we currently have a recall election that was filed, a recall petition was filed for Robin Voss, and nobody can agree on if he should be recalled in his current district or his new district, or if that's going to happen at all. So it's a fun time to be alive in Wisconsin. So currently, Clint Moses is our representative from the 29th Assembly District. Should he choose to run for reelection, he would now be in the 92nd Assembly District, which, as you can see, is kind of a blue band going from the municipality surrounding Menominee and kind of a straight line across to Chippewa Falls. So he's the 29th. The 67th Assembly District is currently represented by, what? Yeah. Representative Summerfield? That's neat. He will be, I believe he's in a totally new Assembly District now as well, but that's off my map, and I don't remember off the top of my head. So that's fun. And then currently, we have the 93rd Assembly District, which is currently represented by Warren Petrick. Warren Petrick's new Assembly District will be Assembly District 29. Everyone clear? Very cool, very exciting, yes, not confusing whatsoever. If we go to the Senate map, currently, the 10th Senate District is represented by Rod Staff Schultz, and the 31st Senate District is represented by Senator Jeff Smith, and the 23rd Senate District is represented by Jesse James. What's neat about that is that in the new Senate maps, Jeff Smith and Jesse James will now have to spar off against each other because their Senate can, they're, the places in which they live now both fall in the 31st Senate District. And you can see Representative Staff Schultz's Senate District, the 10th Senate District, has shifted quite dramatically from kind of the northern part from Western Wisconsin to now a more southern part of Western Wisconsin. So that's fun. And so we'll have to see, this really kind of changes the total dynamic and makeup. There's many different Senate and Assembly candidates who were completely written out of their districts, or have completely new numbered districts, so it's going to be a little bit confusing, but we will make sure, like I mentioned, that after the April election, that all the registered voters in Dunn County have information about their new Assembly and Senate districts and what that means for them. So that is a fun, unanticipated mailing cost that the county clerk's office will incur, but we did try to build in some extra election money because we knew something like this may potentially happen. So we should be good unless they come begging for a budget adjustment later on, we'll see. Any questions about the legislative maps? Okay. The only other thing I wanted to draw your attention to is, there's an election happening on Tuesday, April 2, I hope you're all familiar. And I just wanted to mention a couple of components of that, this is the partisan presidential preference. So a person can go in and select a party, whether it's the Democratic Party or the Republican Party, and then vote for a candidate for president in either one of those. You cannot vote in both parties, you can only vote for one office, either in the Democratic primary or the Republican primary for president. But then after that, all partisan components stop, because everything else on the ballot is part of the nonpartisan spring elections. So you're going to see all the county supervisory districts, all 15 school districts in Dunn County will be up for election as well on their ballots. And then, so I have a couple of sample ballots. What I really wanted to draw everyone's attention to is to make sure, especially for those of you listening at home, I know you're waiting on bated breath about this information, but on the back of your ballot, there are two statewide referendum questions that will be happening. Question one states as follows, use of private funds in election administration. Shall Section 7, subsection 1 of Article 3 of the Constitution be created to provide that private donations and grants may not be applied for, accepted, expended, or used in connection with the conduct of any primary election or referendum? It is a yes or no referendum question. Question number two states election, regarding election officials. Question two states shall Section 7, subsection 2 of Article 3 of the Constitution be created to provide that only election officials designated by law may perform tasks in the conduct of primaries, elections, and referendum? That is a yes or no referendum question as well. These, of course, were, to have a statewide referendum question now in the state of Wisconsin, it has to be passed by two consecutive legislative sessions, which is what these two questions were. The previous legislative session and the current one to appear on the April 2 referenda, or April 2 ballot for these two referendum questions. These two questions did pass on party lines within the state legislature. And of course, we have a legislature that has the ability to do that. So are there any questions on the referendum questions or the spring ballot? What happened? Oh, I'm not there to... Super, I'm sorry.
Did I turn him on or?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Sorry, yeah. I'm good.
Hi, thank you, this is, yeah, quite an interesting time to be in the county clerk's office, so.
It always is.
Yeah. About the questions, I did have a few, I suppose, clarifying questions that I was wondering. So what would be the cost to the county? Let's say both these questions pass, let's work out for that hypothesis. What would be the change in cost to the county clerk's office to fund elections as they currently are? What additional or what other changes do you think would be happening with the office?
Most of the impacts of these two referendum questions would be felt at a municipal level for the municipal clerks. Of course, the county does pay for certain election expenses for the municipalities, and we do bill back certain components of that. So for example, any countywide elections, so all the county supervisory districts, those costs of that part of the election is all covered by the county, as well as the counties on the hook, so to speak, to fund any statewide components of statewide parts of the ballot. So the presidential preference, and then the two referendum questions. School districts pay their percentage of the ballot, and then municipalities pay for their part if they have a municipal election. So that's kind of how that works. The way that that would impact it is, so these two questions are kind of a direct response to the 2020 pandemic. So in 2020, with the uncertainty of how to administer an election in pandemic, there was, there were grant funds that were available to counties and municipalities to help cover the costs of additional things like protective equipment for pole workers, one-time-use pens, there's kind of a many different things that we use, alcohol swabs, alcohol wipes, hand sanitizers, things like that. So there were several different grants that were approved and received by municipalities and counties across the state. I still have boxes of pens, if anybody needs pens, I'll make sure to bring those down next time. But we just didn't know, right? We didn't know how long things were going to go on. So these are kind of a direct response to that. This would basically say, if, if question one is adopted by the state of Wisconsin, this would basically eliminate any opportunity for election officials to fully fund elections should, you know, incidents happen in the, in the future. If there are municipalities, or if there are municipalities, for example, that do not have enough election money set aside, there is a potential for that municipality to close polling locations if they can't fully fund the election. I don't know how else to say that. That's just the reality of what would happen if an election couldn't be fully funded. And so the consolidation of polling locations is a potential response to if question one is passed. If question two is passed, this would kind of eliminate outside groups being able to help volunteer their services to help administer elections. So oftentimes, we get volunteers that do voter registration drives, or we get volunteers who, for example, might help a municipality label 1,000 absentee ballots or something like that. This would basically eliminate the ability in which for those volunteer organizations to come in and help process those ballots. So that would leave the burden of processing 1,000 absentee ballots, for example, on the clerk's office staff. So in that case, it could potentially increase the cost of administering election because now we have a single municipal clerk who's responsible for labeling and sending out 1,000 absentee ballots with no additional help. That then takes X number of hours, it takes them away from their regular day job. The other impact that has is municipal clerks oftentimes in smaller municipalities are part-time, so they might have a full-time job, and it really kind of would impact the ability from which the clerk to complete that component. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, everything's, makes sense so far.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions, Supervisor Hagan?
Yes, but if anyone else has other questions, I'll hold back for now.
Okay.
Otherwise, I have more, if that's okay.
Sure. I'll cut you off if I need.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. To clarify your point about volunteers, right now, I believe I can go and be a pole worker under current, how things.
If you're trained, yeah.
If I'm trained, which is a question that I was talking about. But with question number two, I wouldn't be a election official designated by law, correct?
So to be a pole worker in a municipality, one, you have to complete the training. We started doing countywide trainings, that's a service that we offer now, to make sure that pole workers are trained. After that, the municipal clerks administer an oath of office for the pole workers to be able to administer the election. So by taking that oath, you then become an election official. Does that make sense? So, but as a pole worker, as an election official, then, so for example, if the municipal clerk brings in the pole workers to help with absentee ballot processing and distribution, then of course, you can't volunteer your time to do that in question two, you'd all have to be compensated for that, gratefully so, for the work that you're doing. But we do have volunteer groups that currently help out with that processing. Good question.
All right, I suppose my, I'll do one more, if that's all right. Say both of these are passed, is there anything at the county or municipality ordinance level to, that could be passed in those areas that would be able to assist if these questions passed, or is all of this at the state level and not necessarily anything that can be passed locally to assist?
I see what you're saying. So if, if both of these referendum questions pass, it would impact all 1,850 municipalities in the state of Wisconsin? And there is no local rule that Dunn County could pass, or that a municipality could pass to supersede that, because it would be amending the state constitution with this referendum question.
All right, great, thank you, that answers my questions, thanks.
Yeah, problem. Any other questions about the upcoming April election or the referendum questions? I know they can be a little confusing sometimes, so. Not saying any. Okay, sounds good. If you do have initial questions, please feel free to pop by the county clerk's office, I am there frequently.
Right. That carries us on to item nine, reports of departments, beginning with the Sheriff's Department. Kevin, come on up.
All right, Andrew, thank you, because if this goes long tonight, I'm not going to get the only blame. But if I had known it was going that long, I'd have used the restroom before you started, but just kidding. All right, good evening. I'm going to do something a little bit different tonight, but I'm going to start with a quick overview of the yearly stats, just kind of hit some highlights. And then I'm going to share some videos with you of some incidents, some as recently as this past weekend. So just kind of give you an overview of what it is my staff's expected to do, so. But I can, I can throw numbers at you all night, you can read them, frankly, they don't probably mean a whole lot to you, and give you a full understanding of what my staff has to do. So I'm going to throw some videos in, I'm not going to talk long. Got a couple of videos that will get played in here shortly, but just as a review, total calls for service last year in 2023, were up 464 from 2022, for a total of 14,527 calls for service that the sheriff's office handled, or was involved in at least. Total bookings in the jail were way up from 2023 from 2022, they were up 330 inmates for a total of 1,702 inmates booked in in 2023 compared to 1,389 in 2022. It's an increase of 18% over from one year to the next. And we're starting to see an average daily population in my jail right now of about 100 inmates per day. So that's all costing us all a little bit more money, some of it's covered by contracts with food service and medical and things that, that are kind of controlled, we have some costs built in that if we serve so many inmates and so many meals per day, that it's, whether it's 80 or it's 100, it's kind of built into that contract, so it's, it's not overwhelming. Our medical, whether we have 80 inmates or 100 inmates, that contract doesn't change, you know, but it eventually does cost us all a little bit more money. But I say it at the office just about every day, it's kind of the cost to doing business in the, in the line of work that we're in. So your staffing's starting to look better. We've got a contingent job offer out to fill technically my last position in the field services side of things right now, but in my report, I pointed out that one of my patrol sergeants, Josh Christensen, will be going out on a duty disability as soon as that paperwork's finalized. Right now, he's working light duty and still doing some office stuff and, and taking care of some things. He may actually get an opportunity to do the background investigation on his replacement if he sticks around long enough. But, so we'll have to hire somebody to replace him. The new sergeant's position in the jail that was created for this year, we have to backfill that yet, but otherwise, we're, we're sitting pretty well for staffing in the jail. The, which compared to two years ago. The, which compared to two years ago, I was six staff members in the jail short and no light at the end of the tunnel. So, we've hired an awful lot of good people in the last couple of years to get our staffing levels back, but I don't do, I don't, I don't feel like I do a very good job of giving you a full picture of what the sheriff's office does. You know, like you say, I give you numbers to look at. You can compare from year to year and see where our numbers are going, how many domestics we handle, how many 911 hangups we handle, things like that. But it really doesn't paint a picture for you of what the sheriff's office does. So, this year, I decided to do a little bit different and include some videos. I've got a very talented patrol sergeant that put the first video together for me. And here's some details from the first video that you're going to see. On January 21st, 2023, Deputy Jake Bloom responded to the city manominee to assist manominee police department with apprehending a suspect in a home invasion with shots fired by the suspect. The suspect is now driving around the neighborhood armed with firearms in a vehicle that he had stolen from the victim of the home invasion. Manominee officers were on foot in the neighborhood trying to track the suspect's movements while trying to stay concealed from the suspect. They're vulnerable, they were vulnerable, easy for me to say tonight, with a lack of mobility and available cover. Upon arriving on scene, Deputy Bloom directed other less experienced responding deputies to stay out of the immediate area and to set up a perimeter on the surrounding streets. A little side note to that is one of those deputies that he directed to stay out on the perimeter was very young, less than a year experience, and Deputy Bloom probably saved that deputy's life that night because Deputy Bloom wanted to take bad guy on instead of this guy less experienced. Unfortunately, after this incident, that young deputy decided law enforcement wasn't for him and hung it up. It was kind of the unfortunate business we're in, so. Deputy Bloom located the suspect driving in the area in the stolen vehicle. He readied his squad rifle and blocked the suspect's vehicle with his squad to prevent him from continuing to drive around the neighborhood as the suspect was trying to do a Y-turn in the street. The suspect immediately exited the stolen vehicle and rapidly approached Deputy Bloom with a large silver handgun in his hand as Deputy Bloom exited his squad. Deputy Bloom observed the firearm in the suspect's hand, gave him commands to which he did not comply. As the suspect started to raise the handgun towards Deputy Bloom, Deputy Bloom fired several rounds from his rifle at the suspect to stop the threat to himself, to others in the area and in the public, to other officers in the area and the public. After the threat was stopped and the suspect fell to the ground, Deputy Bloom retrieved his medical bag and attempted to provide lifesaving measures to the suspect. Deputy Bloom utilized his many years of firearms and SWAT training to be the calm in the chaotic scene and his heroic actions protected the lives of many that night. It's believed that the suspect was driving the stolen vehicle around the neighborhood hunting for the manominee officers that were out on foot who had initially responded to the scene of the home invasion. For his heroic actions that night, Deputy Bloom has received the Dunn County Sheriff's Office highest honor with a Medal of Valor. In a quote from manominee police lieutenant Mike Sampson, Deputy Bloom saved our ass. He did exactly what we needed him to do exactly when we needed him to do it.
Got it. One suspect down, all right, anybody else?
No.
All the suspects?
All the suspects.
Good.
Uh, can somebody go back?
Go.
I'm going to stand by this and keep my watch out. Not going to.
Can you drive right through today while standing by the gun? We'll leave that there and start taking off this whole area. Yep, right, right, right behind me. I don't know how easy that serves for their.
Showing another example, and this is a recap of this past weekend, like three days ago. From this past Friday through Monday morning at 5:00 AM, the sheriff's office handled 142 incidents. There were eight defendants in line for court intake on Monday morning held on criminal charges. There were 43 total charges, 43 total criminal charges this weekend, which included six OWI arrests, two of which were fifth and seventh offenses, seven drug arrests, 42 citations, and 54 warnings. For some of the most more serious included fleeing, eluding an officer, reckless driving, OMVWI fifth, that's drunk driving, OMVWI seventh offense, OMVWI causing substantial injury, felony bail jumping, possession of meth, recklessly endangering safety, strangulation and suffocation, and two charges of battery to a law enforcement officer. We dealt with four combative subjects and unfortunately, two of our employees sustained injuries while taking one subject into custody who made a poor life choice thinking he could take on two of our deputies, as well as a Pierce County deputy who suffered a substantial bite on the forearm from a guy high on stimulants or PCP on the way to manominee. Lastly, a SWAT call took a good portion of Friday night and thankfully came to a peaceful resolution after an armed and intoxicated male barricaded in a semi truck out at exit 45, QuickTrip, decided to surrender when he was finally surrounded by three armored sheriff's vehicles. He had, for whatever reason, got drunk, got out of his semi truck, out of his sleeper and fired several pistol rounds. I don't know at what, but deputies in manominee police department responded. And it was kind of a standoff for quite a while. We involved our regional, Oakley Regional SWAT, which we're a part of. They brought over two armored vehicles and we used our MRAP to approach the semi. So, next video, I'll give you a little background. Deputy Chad Muzel was en route to back up another deputy on a trespassing call where a cabin owner had discovered that people were squatting in their cabin. Deputy Muzel came across the van in the area that was all over the road while he was responding. He attempted to stop the vehicle and it pulled into a driveway of a residence in the area of the trespassing complaint. This video was taken by a resident of the home that this intoxicated driver decided to pull into while Deputy Muzel was attempting to stop him. This happened Sunday afternoon, this past Sunday afternoon. Dan, if you could play that one.
Oh my God, babe, he's grabbing the cop! He's grabbing the cop!
Calm down.
I know, what if he grabs his gun? Tase him, get him! Oh my God, babe!
Mom, you're fine, you're fine, you're fine.
Honey, stay right through the door.
Mom, you're fine.
He needs backup or something.
There are two cops at our place and there's a guy resisting arrest and it was getting pretty rough.
Dan, if you could stop that, and I'm going to have him replay it again because it happens very fast. Just keep an eye on, you know, the deputies because it happens, it happens quick.
Oh my God, babe, he's grabbing the cop! Baby, he's grabbing the cop!
Calm down.
I know, what if he grabs his gun? Tase him, get him! Oh my God, babe!
Mom, you're fine, you're fine, you're fine.
Honey, stay right through the door.
Mom, you're fine.
He needs backup or something. Babe, I don't let you go.
I know there are a lot of tough jobs in Dunn County, but I think these are a couple of good examples as to why being a deputy sheriff or a corrections officer is much different than any other job in the county. It's, it's not many other positions in this county need to fight for their life like these two did. Kind of ironically, Sergeant Rich Day is the one in the vest, load-bearing vest we call him. He, he went, he drew his taser, you seen him draw his taser. By the time he got it out of his holster, his on and off switch was broke and his taser wouldn't activate. We believe it got crushed or broke when he got thrown against the car, the front of the squad, so his taser was useless. Eventually, this guy got a faceful of OC or CS spray, which kind of eventually took the fight out of him, but, so it can happen quick and, and like you say, this is just a good example of what they're expected to do and have to do on a regular basis. So, happy to take any questions if anybody has any.
Supervisor Morehouse?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff Biggs, on a much lighter note, will you please tell us how Rookie is?
Rookie is doing very well. He's, he gets locked in Becca's office on a regular basis because he's become quite a snitch in the garbage cans and he can't leave any food on the break room table. So, he's been, he's been confined to Becca's office.
Yeah.
But he's doing good. But.
Supervisor Larry Bjork?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff Biggs, I'd like a little follow-up on the incident at the QuickTrip at exit 45. And I think you stated that the driver was intoxicated and then apparently he really wanted to lose his job, so he started shooting at people.
Right.
But the question I have is kind of serious in that Western Wisconsin has been really void of psychiatric and what's it called when they dry out a drunk?
Detox.
Detox. So, is Dunn County on the line to haul someone like that to now Green Bay for detox and then we drive back and do we have to bring him to trial? What, what, what does it cost the county to have an idiot that we have to deal with in that regard?
In this case, he went to jail and didn't get placed on an emergency detention.
Okay.
So, you know, but in the, in the case of an emergency detention, we, we are on the hook for transporting somebody to Winnebago, for example, with Sacred Heart closing, that's fewer beds in the local region. Doesn't affect us a whole lot from the mental health bed standpoint because we would maybe get somebody in there once. because we would maybe get somebody in there once a year. The beds are always full. So a standard, you know, somebody's threatening suicide, attempted suicide, we take them into custody. We go to the hospital for med clearance because a hospital or a mental health facility won't accept them without med clearance. So that we sit at the hospital with them for anywhere from four to 10 hours. Once we get med clearance in a hospital that will accept them, we drive them four hours across the state, and then we drive home four hours. In, so we could have 16 hours wrapped up in one case. And a lot of times, staffing wise, I don't want to send somebody who's, I don't want to send a deputy alone with somebody in their backseat in that state of mind. So a lot of times, we send two deputies in a car. So it's costing us overtime. In a lot of cases, I have three deputies involved. One that starts it, they sit at the hospital with them for 10 hours. And by the time we get clearance, we have to have two fresh deputies take them across the state and then come back eight hours later. So there's certainly a significant impact to the taxpayers for that. I have, I put the bug in the ear of our legislators to buy Sacred Heart Hospital and turn it into a state-run mental health facility. I don't think that's going to happen, but that's what needs to happen is we need a mental health facility on this side of the state. We just don't, we frankly don't have enough beds. I don't know if you know the history of this, but the state came up with $10 million, eventually $15 million that Sacred Heart had accepted. And then several months before the announcement that they were closing, they turned down that $15 million to expand their mental health facility. So now we know why they turned it down, because they were closing. So, yeah, Larry, did that answer your question?
Yeah, and then just one other thing. We don't have any agreements with anybody being able to go to any medical facility in Minnesota.
And, no.
I said, sorry.
It's, no, as, as messed up as this sounds, it would be ideal. Look how many hospitals are across the river in the Twin Cities, right? And how many mental health facilities? If we take somebody into custody for a mental health commitment, they're in custody, like an arrest. We take them across the river into Minnesota, we lose jurisdiction and we lose the authority to bring them back. So we have to stay in within, within the state of Wisconsin to keep that jurisdictional authority.
So that's just like if the court orders an arrest warrant for somebody, and they happen to make it to Minnesota.
They have to go through.
They can go to the park every day.
Yep, they go through extradition to get brought back to Wisconsin. We've got one sitting in the Twin Cities right now that waived extradition, thank goodness, probably because she doesn't like sitting in Hennepin County Jail. But we would have to do the same thing for a mental health commitment.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two small or short questions. Back when the jail was built, I think it was built a little bit, you know, bigger, we were actually making money by taking some inmates from different counties. Is that still going on?
It, not currently. We did have a state contract to state, to take state inmates at $51.46 a day.
Okay.
The state kind of pulled our, the rug out from underneath us on that contract a couple of years ago and started housing their own inmates back in their own facilities. Not sure how, their, their staffing levels are about 66% right now. But they, they pulled that contract out from the counties that were willing to do that for them. And so we no longer can for the state. There aren't any, I've been approached by a couple of other sheriffs about housing inmates for them if the need arises, but there hasn't anybody real close. The closest was Marathon County over in Wausau. Approached me about maybe taking some of their inmates, but I think they've got some staffing levels figured out so that they can keep their facility open.
Okay. And my second question, see that you arrest a guy selling drugs, driving around with a car, and he's convicted. Can that car be confiscated? If it is, does the, the money from that sale, does it stay with the sheriff department? Or does it go into the county funds?
You, in some cases, you can seize a vehicle, but asset forfeiture money's changed a couple of years ago. If we were able to take that vehicle, seize it, sell it, say it was paid off, that money actually goes to the Wisconsin School Fund, not to the county pockets. But you should say the, the majority of it goes to the Wisconsin School Fund. The Dunn County would be able to retain like 20% of it or something. You bet.
Supervisor Lino.
Yes, Sheriff, I have one good question here. I, I see this listing of all the different things that you guys have dealt with and stuff. And on that list, there's something called suspicion. And I was kind of wondering, what is suspicion?
Sure. So suspicion, something that's called suspicion is generally, a neighbor sees some goofy activity, activity going on over at their neighbor's house. They don't know what's going on. They call the sheriff's office, we go over and investigate. It turns out to be the cleaning person came, and it turns into nothing more than that. It could be a person walking down Highway 25 at midnight and fully dressed in black. Doesn't look like they belong in the area. Somebody calls it in, we go check it out. That's a suspicion call.
I just thought that there was, you know, 900, 1,000, 900. You know, there's a lot of those calls during the course of the year.
It's next to traffic stops and 911 hangups and missed dials. It's right up there with our number one case, number of cases.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You bet.
Supervisor Hagan.
Yeah, for your recreational safety patrol. If I recall, over the past couple of years, there's been a ask for an extra person in that department. Is that something we should be looking forward to for 2025's budget? Is that something that's still on the table?
It's certainly some, it's certainly a want.
Sure.
Yeah. And I think we can justify it with the, you know, amount of time we can put them in a boat. The snowmobile patrol would have been a little tough this year. But, but ATVs, you know, and the ATV numbers are just complaints really that were called in. In 2023, there was only 59 ATV, UTV complaints called in. Now, if we have a deputy out there enforcing registration and, and driving while intoxicated on a UTV, you know, there's, those are certainly going to go up and would justify, you know, the position. But, you know, the, those of you that live around Tanner Lake, we spend quite a bit of time up there in the boat when we have staff available to do it. If we had somebody dedicated that could do that, you know, every other weekend or whatever it may be, it would certainly help those, those people on Tanner, especially in the no wake zones and things like that.
Sure. And with the ATV, UTV clarification, I guess, were some of the numbers for that coming from people who, for the illegal operation? Was it just like ignorance of the new open roads policy on that? Like people who didn't know what exactly that specifically meant for licensing or whatnot?
Yeah, I didn't dissect, you know, each one of those by any means. It, it could have been a variety of things. Crashes, rollovers. We've seen a significant jump when the roads opened up, but thankfully, not as bad as I actually anticipated. It's been pretty well, you know, I don't know, you'll have to ask Dustin how bad they're tearing up the shoulders of the roads and things like that. But realistically, they're not, they haven't had as big of an impact as I thought they would be.
Well, that's good to hear. All right, thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else? It didn't look like it. Thank you, Sheriff Biggs.
You're welcome.
Next up, the Medical Examiner. I believe Marcy is online.
I am online. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good evening, and I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for the continued support of the Medical Examiner's Office and the work we do. I appreciate the opportunity to present virtually as I've been battling with springtime illness and asthma and don't seem to be winning the battle. I spoke with Administrator Corpula earlier today and let her know that my presentation would be modified to a shortened version from my original plan. But I believe the content within my report should explain anything, and I would be happy to answer any questions. It seems fitting to present the Medical Examiner's Annual Report on the same evening as Sheriff Biggs and Melissa reporting dispatch and law enforcement, are two departments that my office communicates with on almost a daily basis. I've always said, even back in my years of working at the hospital, that dispatchers and communication center workers are, are the true first responders, and they can bridge that gap between callers and life-saving resources. And in the event that life cannot be saved, they are our first point of contact, relaying important information and assisting us with other contacts throughout a death investigation case. We simply could not do our jobs without them. Excuse me one minute. As well as the collaboration between law enforcement agencies and the Medical Examiner's Office, they play a critical role in the investigation of, of deaths. You were able to listen to and watch some examples from Sheriff Biggs. Our office, of course, was involved in one of those cases, and our duties include the pronouncement of death, the body chain of custody, authorization and attendance of autopsy, final disposition of the body, death certificate, certifying and participation and family notification. And an important thing to remember, family notification includes updates to next of kin throughout the days, weeks, and sometimes months after the death. There are many details to focus on in a death investigation. Our office works very hard to hold a high standard of showing respect towards the deceased and their loved ones. Keeping in mind, each decedent has a loved one grieving their loss. A phrase that my staff has heard often is that we do not need to respect the situation surrounding the death, but we do need to be respectful to all. And in 20 years of doing that, my opinion of that has not changed. Dunn County continues to provide medic. Sorry, excuse me. Medical Examiner service to Eau Claire County. This has been a positive and strong relationship. Our office works diligently with administration and finance to provide constant and accurate service. The result of this collaboration resulted in a balanced budget in 2023 with, actually with excess in, in both counties. To put in perspective a little bit what it means to serve for two counties is Dunn County has a population of 45,651 and covers 864 square miles. There's seven law enforcement agencies, including State Patrol, to serve Dunn County residents. Eau Claire County has a population of 105,837 and covers 645 square miles with eight law enforcement agencies, including State Patrol, serving their county. That's a combined population of just over 151,000 people and just over 1,500 square miles. The Medical Examiner's Office, your Medical Examiner's Office, an office of staffed with four full-time and three part-time medical examiners, serves all deaths across all 1,500 square miles. Proud of each and every one of our staff, all put in tireless hours or tiring hours and commitment and dedication to this important job. Provided in your packets are the yearly recap numbers for each county. I'm not going to go into great detail, but I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that you may have. Dunn County shows 298 deaths with Eau Claire being at 1,224. This chart breaks down the types of deaths, the autopsies, the burials versus cremations. And the other chart provided in your pack up just shows the difference in some of the deaths that we get frequently asked about from 2022 to 2023. This varies. Each year, there's a fluctuation in these numbers. I'm often asked how our staff deals with death with such regularity, and most deaths are accompanied by grief. But with that grief, there can be hope, the gift of life, hope for both donors and recipients through organ, tissue, eye donation. Excuse me for one minute. Apologize. Many of you may be unaware that the Medical Examiner's Office is required by the Wisconsin Uniform and Anatomical Gift Act to report death to an organ, tissue, and eye bank organization. Since many potential organ and tissue donors fall under medical legal jurisdiction, the Medical Examiner bears the responsibility to authorize or deny the procurement of organs or tissues on a case-by-case basis. This decision-making process can oftentimes result in difficulty in balancing the need for accurate cause and manner of death with a potential impact of donation on the lives of the recipients. We're contracted Dunn and Eau Claire County with the American Tissue Service Foundation. That's a local nonprofit agency that's housed in Eau Claire. They work with local hospitals, funeral homes, and for recovery in our counties and other counties. They collaborate with the Lions Eye Bank of Wisconsin to facilitate donations. ATSF also collaboratively works with Ramsey County Medical Examiner's Office, where we have our autopsy examinations performed to be able to offer tissue and eye donation when the autopsy is complete. The Medical Examiner's Office is responsible for determining the cause and manner of death and the circumstances surrounding the death. Including in that role is making referrals for potential tissue and eye donation. As you can see on the screen, saving lives in Wisconsin. It breaks down anybody who has, if the decedent has a donor dot on their driver's license or documented on advanced directives, that is their legal decision to donate, and we can help facilitate their decision. As you can see on this chart, Dunn and Eau Claire Counties are generous registered donors. We're among some of the highest at 61 and 64%. Next slide, please. Oftentimes, somebody might wonder what could be the impact of donating tissue that's not life-saving. That's not life-saving. But has any of your lives been impacted by organ, tissue or eye donation? One in ten people will need some type of transplant and this shows that one tissue donor can heal seventy-five or save or heal seventy-five or more lives. Next slide, please. It really hit home years ago when I learned the uses for gifts of tissue. Breast cancer survivors, most of us know somebody who's experienced a diagnosis of breast cancer. Breast cancer survivors that had a mastectomy, donor skin from one tissue donor can provide healing skin for up to ten breast cancer survivors. And the same blood vessels are used to increase circulation. Well, they use those reports for access and dialysis patients and corneal eye donation. And some of you may actually have been a transporter for the Lions Club or members of the Lions Club, being an eye donor can give the gift of sight to people. These are just a few applications of the gifts. The statistic that is used is one donor saves or heals seventy-five or more lives. However, helping the donor family is very important to our office. By making the referral, we are offering a family the hope that their loved one's legacy continues and can save and heal lives. Establishing positive relationships between death investigators and the donation community is crucial. Education is an important part of that as well and that's why I'm before you tonight to share this important part of our life or our jobs is more than just dealing with death. It's dealing with the possibility of life for others as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Marcy? Supervisor Calabrese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Marcy, for your report. And like you mentioned at the end, the education piece is really a big deal. And I'm just, I've been thoroughly impressed in getting to know you and getting to know the department and things that I never knew of and you touched on it briefly at the beginning and about your continued relationship with people who are survivors of the deaths that you deal with. And I know you shared stories of not just in the immediate aftermath of the death, but on the anniversaries of the death, your office still being in touch with people. And I'm just really impressed as you've weathered COVID and kept within budget. And I hope that we don't have too many more questions for you so that you can rest. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Lyon.
Hi, Marcy. I had one quick question. I have a brother-in-law who, when he died, donated his body to science. Is that something that people do still in this day and age for research?
Yes, yes, that that still can be done. Piece of that that isn't well-understood is in order for a body donation to occur. The person needs to have all of that paperwork in place prior to their death. So if one of my loved ones passed away and they did not have that paperwork in place, it will not happen. We can't make that decision or complete the paperwork for anybody else.
Thank you, Marcy. That looks like all of the questions. So I'm going to let you quietly sign off and rest your voice and hopefully get some hot lemonade or honey or something. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right. Emergency Services, Melissa, come on up.
Just had a cough and Dan said that I couldn't try and get out of my report at this time. So here I am. So thank you very much. I have a short report tonight and I do have a little bit of an audio. When I happened to talk to Kevin a couple of weeks ago, he told me what he was going to do for his annual report and he had mentioned it would be kind of nice if I could add in maybe some of the audio from that call. So I did work on that and I do have that for you a little bit later. So the first part is the Emergency Management Division that I run. Basically, I tried to put as much in my written report as I could and I just want to highlight probably the planning portion that we have in emergency management. It's a lot of paperwork. It's a lot of, you know, looking into the future, what could happen? And I think that since Chris has taken over as administrator, she's really focused on planning. We've worked a lot with COOP COG, which is basically our departments within Dunn County, working on a plan for our own department, but then also together, what do we do in a time of an emergency? What would we do if we couldn't come to this building? How would we provide the services that that all of the wonderful departments of Dunn County provide? How would we do that? So we focus a lot on things like that, like I said, planning within just our Dunn County government here, but then also planning with other government agencies, city of Menominee and the villages, the townships, things like that, the local businesses that we have in town that have hazardous chemicals. We work on plans for them. So that's a lot of what we do is kind of planning. Last year, if you saw on the report, we did have a couple flooding incidents in Springbrook Township. And, you know, that kind of works off that planning part. We do hazard mitigation planning. So that kind of indicates where some of the vulnerable places are in Dunn County that we could have some things happen. And Springbrook with the Chippewa River that runs through there is one of those areas that does cause us a little bit of issue. But those are types of things that that we really take pride in is working on those plans, working with the community, working with the other governmental agencies and, you know, trying to be as prepared as we can. We know we're not always one hundred percent prepared, but trying to be as prepared as we can, you know, to kind of weather the storm, so to speak, no pun intended or pun intended. So does anybody have any questions about emergency management or anything that I have in my report for the emergency management portion?
Supervisor Lino.
One quick question is I had the opportunity to go to a high-pressure gas line, pipeline meetings and my eyes really opened as to how encompassing those types of emergency situations could potentially be, especially with the various materials that are coming down these pipelines at this point. I noticed that you just mentioned a few things in that and I was just wondering how much you really coordinate with the different companies, corporations, how that all fits together.
Sure, sure. So, you know, we do have annual plans and procedures that we kind of work with them on, probably not as much in person, so much as just, you know, they share their plan with us. We kind of go over it, you know, we go back and forth through email. They do offer training in our area every year and we do, we at least send at least one person to the training, you know, so that we kind of know what's up and coming and what they're doing with their, their equipment and things like that. So, you know, there, there definitely is some collaboration with those companies. There's always things to learn. There's always things that we could prepare for. I think that one thing that we probably need to expand on is incorporating a lot of the other responders that would be involved in an incident. So like an exercise, including one of those pipelines and including, you know, law enforcement, fire EMS, the people that would be, you know, on that incident if we did have something like that happen. But yeah, it is, it's, you know, it's always changing, but, you know, they do keep in really close contact with us and, you know, we do work with them on different plans and like I said, go to some of their trainings that they have for us.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, you're welcome. Any other questions on emergency management? Okay. So Communications is the other division that I have and like I said in my report, the number one thing in that department is the employees, the people, the people wearing the headsets. And, you know, Kevin gave me a little maybe light of hope when he said two years ago his jail was extremely short-staffed and he didn't see the light at the end of the tunnel. And here he is two years later and he's almost full-staffed because I'm exactly where he was two years ago. We are having a hard time keeping staff and it's, it's been a journey. It's been a long journey and we're hopeful that 2024 is going to be our year, that we're going to see that light at the end of the tunnel. So it's been hard. My staff has been amazing. They work a lot of shifts. They, you know, sacrifice a lot of their, their time off to come in and fill those shifts because we have a lot of vacancies and it is a tough job. It's hard to do. It's hard to go through, you know, some of the calls we do. And I do have an audio that I want to play for you and I was going to play the whole entire call that Kevin showed earlier with the officer-involved shooting in Menominee from the phone call through the radio traffic, but I opted to leave the phone call off. But when you listen to this audio, it is the audio as it was happening in the dispatch center. So it's two and three frequencies talking at the same time. But when you listen to that, remember that the one dispatcher was still on the phone that whole time. She was talking on the radio and her partner was taking the other calls that were coming in about different things, maybe something as simple as a suspicion, you know, you know. So, so keep in mind that as you listen to these dispatchers work through this call, this is, this is a high-stress call for them. They're pretty calm. They, they do what they need to do to get the job done and, and they did well. So if you want to play that for me, Dan, I appreciate it.
Headquarters one ninety-four. Start responding toward twenty-four oh two Bongi Drive, apartment number two. Complaint states there's someone trying to break into his door with a weapon.
Twenty-two, I got it.
Twenty-seven ninety-four, might be that guy one twenty-two was dealing with the other day.
I'm not a hundred percent sure which customer, you know, so.
Please say that guy had, uh, at least a forty-five, if not other weapons in the house.
Yeah, for him.
The first two that get there, grab your vest.
Headquarters responding units, complaint states that there's a male subject that has entered his apartment and is shooting around at him. Not my fire. Sheriff, what's the stage near Bongi Drive? Stage near Bongi Drive. Officers en route to us. This is what we look for. Shot fired. Stage near Bongi Drive. Ten-four, Michael. Headquarters, sorry, units. I've lost contact with the caller and he is not responding to me.
Twenty-two, I got it.
Ten-four.
Stop short and get your rifle, guys. I'm going to head down to twenty-eighth and come from the south. Four oh five, I'm going to stop short here at the armory and grab my stuff.
Headquarters, sorry, units, complaint advised that a male subject held him at gunpoint. He is not answering any more questions right now.
County contact state. See if they can get some cars for MPD ten sixty.
Two-eight, you already contacted state.
Five oh eight eighteen, you want me to start that way?
How far you got?
County copy.
Headquarters responding units, is an older white male with a beard, wearing a beanie and a large black coat. Complaint advised that the suspect took his car keys and his ID. The complainant's vehicle is a blue PT Cruiser in the parking lot. Headquarters, two responding units. My complainant is now speaking with another male. It sounds like on scene. He is not answering questions. Is anybody on scene with him?
PT Cruiser backing out. He's going to be going cell phone.
Copy, PT Cruiser backing out.
We need you one oh three, one oh three, stop in front of us. One at gunpoint. He's in his vehicle. If he's going to get out.
Copy, one at gunpoint. He's in his vehicle. If he's going to get out.
Lost track. PT Cruiser heading south on Bongi, at the intersection twenty. Pulled into an address.
Back one.
Twenty-six, any updates that you copy?
PT Cruiser, it's on like left south and then pulled into an address. Twenty-seven, headquarters, can you get some other units to block off? Twenty-fourth and Bongi.
Copy.
How are you, our units responding to Bongi and MPD is requesting officers to block off twenty-fourth and Bongi.
Yes, you what?
Twenty-six, copy. You're free, pardon anybody closer.
Everybody link up on me by the green dumpster.
Twenty-six county, did city have an address of that vehicle pulled into?
How are you, can I say, call this addict?
Did MPD have an address of that vehicle pulled into?
Oh, three, any Tony, you're it?
Our units are responding, I have one from Culvers and one coming from Free Farm.
Twenty-six, one oh three, I'm just hitting downtown. Two twenty-six, it's just coming into downtown.
One oh three, two twenty-six.
Go ahead.
I'm from the north, old castle, past Taro. I can still see brake lights on somewhere down past Taro. We think he's there. Can't tell if he's fucked bailed or what. And, uh, we're just trying to get inside to check on our victim now before we approach.
Ten-four, you got a rough hundred block.
He's telling the Taro and Bongi, you'll see us.
Ten-four. Two-eight, two and nine, if you can copy, I'm calling, can you get a dog on standby?
Two thirteen, twenty-four, South Broadway. Do you guys still want, want me on Bongi Road?
I'll hold there for now, just in case he goes mobile. One oh three, headquarters, information.
Grab. One oh three, go ahead with the traffic.
Sorry, we're trying to stop the vehicle from the, from the danger zone here. Uh, black handgun, he fired at least two rounds at the victim inside. That's, uh, for sure.
Ten-four, black handgun fired two rounds at the victim.
It's coming right out.
How are you, our units be advised, there was a black handgun, there are two rounds fired at the victim. Black handgun, two rounds were fired at the victim.
Four, six, two rounds.
Is that PT Cruiser leaving? Two and nine, county said through one.
Ten-four, twenty.
Shot fired.
Ten-four, shots fired at twenty-one fifteen, twenty-one fifteen.
Copy, shots fired, where you got?
Twenty-six county, shot fired, one side back down.
Copy, shot fired, one side back down. I have EMS state. Headquarters, medic one, engine one, shot fired. You are ten-two to approach.
Ten-four, we'll be around.
Ten-four.
Engine one, headquarters, what address are they at?
Bongi and Taro.
And that, that is the end of our radio traffic that we had. And the very first voice that you heard dispatch, she was very, very, very calm. She was a trainee. She was two and a half months into her training and she resigned shortly after that. So like Kevin said, you know, sometimes this business is just not for everybody. I think that's why we struggle sometimes to, you know, keep full staff is it sounds like it's a really amazing job and my employees did an amazing job during that time, but it is not for everybody. And we do appreciate the ones that have, you know, made this career and have dedicated, you know, twenty-plus years to this. So I do appreciate all the support that you've given me. I know that we've had supervisors come in and take a tour and we do appreciate that. It is nice to have you see what we do. You know, not always during the, the extreme times, you know, there are times when it is just the suspicions or just the traffic complaints and things like that. But, you know, as, as Kevin showed tonight and as the audio that we have tonight, it can go the other way too. So, does anybody have any questions?
I'm not seeing any, but I would like to comment, you have gone so far above and beyond keeping things running short-staffed.
Yeah, the midnight shift has, it's been interesting. Let's just say, I'm hoping that comes to an end soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Consideration of reports, resolutions and ordinances to the county board from the Executive Committee, item A, resolution on 2023 carry. from the Executive Committee, item A, Resolution on 2023 Carry Forwards and 2024 Budget Adjustments. I would need a motion and a second. Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Lina, seconds. Speaking to the resolution, this is the standard. Money comes in, money goes out. We have to keep the budget adjusted so that it all balances out. If I have any questions, we can try and field those. Supervisor Larry Bjork.
I don't know if this is the right place in the meeting, but I was real pleased at the Monday meeting of the AODC and funds that they have. Paula might be able to tell us where they came from, that were used to finish the purchase of the bus for the healthcare center. And just so if anybody knows, I went to the open house, not just to get a cupcake, but to view the bus. And Ms. Doherty, is it Lisa Saturday? Says, Larry, would you like a ride on the ramp up into the bus? So Larry positioned himself on the lift where the wheelchairs go, and she hit the button, and it didn't screech, groan, or smoke. Lifted me right up, and I walked into the bus. So big, big deal for the neighbors. And I was really pleased that I think the last $20,000 was brought to bear and completed their purchase. And one of the best things was, besides the cupcake and the ride in the ramp, was you could go in and you could vote for the name on the bus. And they probably had 30 different names down there. And a cousin of mine has worked there close to 40 years. His name is Chuck, and Chuck was one of the choices I had to vote for the bus. So whatever the name of the bus will be fine with me. But it was a wonderful experience to see county government kind of, one hand, help take care of the other and be able to provide mobile transportation for folks there today and maybe folks there later on. So thanks again, Dunn County.
Thank you, Supervisor Bjork. Yeah, absolutely good news on that. Supervisor Kinnear.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Like you said, it's always money in, money out, usually a grant. So I'm just kind of confused where it says fund balance applied. So like environmental zoning, you pay and then fund balance is applied? It's not a grant or it's not money in, money out? How does that work?
Chris, you want to? Beata? I could take a crack at it, but Beata will do a much better job on this.
Good evening. The reason we label fund balance, because when the money wasn't used when the year ended, that's exactly where it went. So if there is a project that was, let's say, there was a project that was budgeted, but it didn't get completed, but the budget approved that there was a funding secure behind it. So then when the project didn't get complete, it's asking to continue on moving forward those funds, but it's coming from the general, from the fund balance itself. So if the funding was debt, then we would then put that as a fund balance. Because when that money come, when we borrow those funds, that goes into our general account. So there is no source. So it's not levy, unless it's a grant or it would come from a general fund.
Thank you, Beata. And it looks like that satisfies Supervisor Kinnear. Anybody else? All right, then I guess we are willing to vote on this, ready to vote on this. And this is a roll call vote. So if you tap your screen on your microphone, you'll be able to activate the voting, which I am going to start right now. While the supervisors are doing that, regarding the fiscal year 2023 carryforwards and the fiscal year 2024 budget adjustments, Supervisor Vogel.
Yes.
Supervisor Vogel votes yes. Supervisor Robinson.
Yes.
Supervisor Robinson votes yes. There we go. Motion passes. And passes. All right, on to the next one of those, which is also a roll call vote. It's same deal, Health Department budget adjustment. I need a motion and a second. Supervisor Morehouse, Supervisor Hagan. If anyone has any questions about that one at this point, now's the time. Okay, not seeing any. We can go ahead to our roll call vote if you've got it set up. Well, momentarily. All right. Voting is active for everyone present. Supervisor Vogel.
Yes.
Supervisor Vogel votes yes. Supervisor Robinson.
Yes.
Supervisor Robinson votes yes. Motion passes. On to, it's 10, so on to 11. Consideration of Reports, Resolutions, and Ordinances coming to the County Board from the Standing Committees. Highway Resolution for Work Zone Awareness Week. I need a motion and a second. Supervisor Prochnow, Supervisor Gary Bjork, speaking to this. Randy, do you want to?
Could we ask Dustin? Because Dustin spoke, I mean, just because I think that he spoke well at highway about this sort of regular thing we do, but how meaningful it really is.
Come on up. Yeah, so this resolution is for Work Zone Awareness Week. It's a national event that happens every year. This year's theme is Work Zones Are Temporary. Actions Behind the Wheel Can Last Forever. So not only is this for Dunn County highway employees, but all employees and individuals that work within traffic zones. Obviously, we're seeing an uptick in crashes and incidences. And obviously, everybody in these work zones have families and lives outside of work. So we're trying to promote the safety as much as possible. So April 15 through the 19 is National Work Zone Awareness Week. So we will have a video and we have a poster out, and we'll be promoting that as much as we can. Thank you, Dustin. Any further speaking? Seeing none, it looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. That's it for most of the general business. On to announcements. Our next regular county board meeting will be Tuesday. Important to remember, Tuesday, not Wednesday, April 16, 2024, at 7:00 PM. And we will be doing the usual organizing the board stuff at that point. We have a capital improvements workshop, April 27, at 8:30 AM. Everybody's favorite time for a county board meeting. I wanted to also mention that Dan Dunbar has been offered and accepted the job as Assistant County Manager on top of his IT duties, and we are very excited to have him doing that. So thank you, Dan. And that is all that I've got. Any? All right, we are adjourned. Oh, wait. Sorry. Supervisor Kinnear.
Thank you. Just, you all had a survey sheet at your spot. And it's a private survey, or, I mean, no one knows who you are. It's just, fill it out, please, and let the group know where you get your news. It's a group that's been trying to find a way to get local news out to people. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kinnear. All right, before I hit the gavel. Okay, we are adjourned.